Evan.
Here.
Caleronia.
Here.
Canisius.
Here.
Genacio.
Here.
Groveland.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Lima.
Here.
Livonia.
Mount Morris.
Here.
North D'Anto. Nunde.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage.
Here.
Sparta.
Here.
Springwater.
Here.
West Sparta.
Here.
York.
Here.
Ian, would you please give the rest of the candidates for the question.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Senior Airman Heather Delaney. She was born in Kansas Saraga and graduated from Kansas Saraga Central School. Served in the United States Air Force from May 1995 until her discharge in May of 1999. Upon completion of her military service, she was a bachelor's degree from the former Rockefeller Business Institute, known today as the Everest Institute. While in the Air Force, Heather completed her basic training at Clark on the Air Force Base in Texas and completed her fourth duty at Heathrow Air Force Base in Florida as a weapons specialist with a McDonald's on this F-15 Eagle American twin engine, all weather capable fighter aircraft. She deployed as an aircraft armament system specialist in Saudi Arabia and took up the training missions in Las Vegas and throughout Kansas. For her military service, Senior Airman Heather Delaney was awarded the Air Force Training Ribbon, the National Defense Service Medal, and Orange Forces Expeditionary Medal, the Air Force Outstanding Unit Award, and the Air Force Grid Combat Medal. After her military service, Heather worked at a Walmart introducing center before coming home to Livingston County where she worked in the federal legal office and went through the last district report. She worked at Livingston County Family Court before settling in as an accountant or apprentice with the Livingston County Hall of Fame where she works today. Heather has a son, and obviously grew big in the outdoors. She goes gardening, spending time with family, and scores on her first grand dunk. Heather, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I have the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, for your service in the United States Air Force, the board supervisors needs to present you with a certificate of appreciation. And I also have from a liberal event, a depth of experience in the veteran's, so I haven't seen that before.
Well, congratulations.
We have the meeting minutes from our last regular meeting, May 24th. If consideration, does anybody have any changes they care to bring forward at this time? During none, I look for a motion in a second, please.
Andrew Schuster.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Voted. Gary, some communications in chat?
Receipt of notice of claim in the matter of Randy J. Rowe versus the State of New York Department of Corrections and Community Supervision in the Livingston County Jail. The next conversation with the county will be held on Thursday, June 29th, 2023, at 5:30 PM at the Groveland Town Hall. And a thank you note from Chairman Lefter.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Bill Ford forward, please come forward and introduce the local law.
Good afternoon, everybody. Mr. Demming. I'm here today to introduce local law B, 2023, providing a partial exemption from real property taxes to certain qualifying volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. This proposed law will pay a 10% exemption to volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. With two years of active service, this law would also allow for life unexemption for members who have through 20 years of active service along with the option to grant exemption to unrevered surviving spouses of deceased members who are already receiving the exemption and members that were killed in the line of duty. This is a residential only exemption, hence for primary residents to the volunteer firefighter community.
Thank you, Bill. Very much. Next, we have the claims against the county.
Mr. Chairman, I move this abstract of claims and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Was there any discussion on this abstract of claims? During none, the world please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted.
We also have some resolutions on the particular agenda.
Pointing member to the Livingston County Planning Board, Scott Kohberg. Resolution supporting the submission of an application to the New York State Farm Land Protection Implementation Grants Program, Brady Farm. Resolution supporting the submission of an application to the New York State Farm Land Protection Implementation Grants Program, Doolittle Farm. Resolution supporting the submission of an application to the New York State Farm Land Protected Protection Implementation Grants Program, Zorno Farm. Pointing members to the Livingston County Emergency Communications Governance Board, Joseph Gere and, I'm sorry, Joseph Gier and George Warden Jr. Providing for a public hearing on proposed local law B, 2023, providing a partial exemption from real property taxes to certain qualifying volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there any discussion in any of these resolutions? During none, I look for a motion in a second, bringing that to a vote. It's a vote.
Thank you, Wesker.
Thank you. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Voted. As Gary, the role call on these resolutions, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted.
We now have some resolutions that are going to require a separate rule.
Mrs. Walker, authorizing a professional services contract for radiology services for the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, Ultra Mobile Imaging Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or discussion on this conflict? During none, the world please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted. Authorizing a professional services contract for medical services for the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, Mobile Primary Care.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or discussion on this professional service contract? During none, the world please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4607, absent 447. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, SHC Services Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any discussion on this resolution? During none, the world please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Department of Health, Anna Bowen, Doing Businesses OT Today, Building Blocks Comprehensive Services Inc., Building Blocks Learning Center LLC, Casa Trinity Inc., County of Monroe, D'Anto Central School District, Keshakla Central School District, Mary Carriola Children's Center, National Medical Services Inc., Doing Businesses NMS Labs, Step-by-Step Physical Therapy, Occupational Therapy, Speech Language Therapy, Psychology, and LMSW Services, PLLC, Wayland Co-Acton Central School District, and Western New York Speech Language Cathology OT and PT Consultants, PLCC, Doing Businesses Clinical Associates of the Finger Lakes.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any discussion on any of these contracts? During none, the world please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Department of Social Services, Encompassed Resources for Learning.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any discussion on this resolution? During none, the world please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted. Authorizing the Commissioner of the Livingston County Department of Social Services to sign the following contract, Donated Funds Agreements.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any questions on this contract? During none, the world please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following Grant Award Contract for the Livingston County Office for the Aging, New York State Office for the Aging.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any concerns on this Grant Award Contract? During none, the world please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Office of Workforce Development, CNF Transportation Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any concerns on this resolution? During none, the world please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted. Mr. Demming, rescinding resolution number 2021-177, the 2021 LCDC contract amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any concerns on this resolution? During none, the world please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted. Awarding bid for the Office of Emergency Management for two cargo trailers, Davis's Trailer World.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on this purchase of the foot? During none, the world please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted. Awarding bid for the Office of Emergency Management for fire training, structured demolition, durable demolition LLC.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on awarding this bid? During none, the world please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Planning Department, Arc Glow and GeoCo Inc.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? During none, the world please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office, NMS Labs and Genesi Valley Bosse's.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on?
I have a question on the date that's on there.
Mrs. Walker?
Yeah, the date that's on there, the term for NMS Labs, is that correct? And how would it be?
Twenty-three should be a twenty-four.
Should be a twenty-four.
One year?
Should we report that? Look for a motion in a second. Can we get a minute?
Move, Wesker. Second.
There are a motion in a second to amend the date of that contract, all those in favor?
Aye.
Voted. As Gary, are there any further questions before we consider voting on this resolution? During none, the world please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nunde.[1139.48] Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Lubonya?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
Aye.
North D'Anto?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted. Amending the 2023 Livingston County Budget, Department of Health, Highway, there are three, and workforce development.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Naft. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Here none, the world, please, Michelle?
Evan?
Aye.
Kelladonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Lubonya?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
Aye.
North D'Anto?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for Livingston County, JP Morgan Chase Bank, N.A.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Naft. Any questions or concerns on this conflict? Here none, the world, please, Michelle?
Evan?
Aye.
Kelladonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Lubonya?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
Aye.
North D'Anto?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted. Authorizing the county administrator to negotiate amendments to the memorandum of understanding for coordination of the EXO settlement funds.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Naft. Are there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Here none, the world, please, Michelle?
Evan?
Aye.
Kelladonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Lubonya?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
Aye.
North D'Anto?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Planning Department, Arc Glow, and GeoCo, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Here none, the world, please, Michelle?
Evan?
Aye.
Kelladonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?